There's a whole host of things that we now do, basically, for Bennington and Woodford. And this would allow us, I think, to get a handle on what cooperative opportunities might be better out there for all of the towns. Yes, Bennington is the largest community that would participate. But when you think of each of the towns all the way down the line, Route 7, holding implement solid household hazardous waste collection days throughout the year, principally focused in the spring and fall. We've had people from Shaftesbury who, for convenience sakes, would really love to use our recycling facilities. We can't allow them to do that because the taxpayers support the recycling. We don't charge a tip fee. We don't, we haven't ever developed one. So you've got this kind of a hopscotch approach to solid waste all the way up and down Route 7A. If we decide to cooperate in this development of this plan, I think it's going to open some doors and perhaps some eyes to us to what cooperative ventures might be available to us in the future. Ways that we can consolidate our activities and create, perhaps, household hazardous waste collection facilities where they would then be open and available at different times during the week, not once or twice a year, for people to bring their household hazardous waste materials. So there are some opportunities here that, yes, it will cost us some money. As I indicated at the bottom, the, this year, we received, I put sixty-six hundred, it actually was seventy-eight hundred is what we ended up being allocated after all the grants were approved. And that is leveraged against twenty-six thousand dollars in household hazardous waste collection events. So for a lot less than that and for a lot larger grant, depending on a per capita basis, and I've broken that all out in the memorandum, I think there's an opportunity here to work with the BCRC and the other towns to really get a handle on what we do here in the county and how we do it. And perhaps find a way to create savings for everybody in the county that uses these facilities going forward.
You've laid out a lot of positive things in your memorandum, but I gotta believe there's gotta be some downsides to that. Have you thought of any, other than the cost?
Other than cost, I haven't. You know, we, Bennington came this close to having a household hazardous waste collection facility. For those of you who weren't on the board at the time, we worked with folks in Casella to turn our Leach Eight Collection System building, which is a cement block building right at the end of the drive as you enter the transfer, transfer station, into a collection facility. It ultimately fell apart because of insurance issues and staffing issues that Casella had in being able to keep that building open and actually operate it because you then become a generator of household hazardous waste material once you hold it for more than a certain period of time.
Are we already an e-waste location for the county?
We are an e-waste location.
Well, the county, is there any other one in the county?
I believe Sunderland is also an e-waste.
So we're already receiving things from other adjacent towns?
That's correct. That's correct. And remember, Casella's contract with us allows them to bring waste, trash waste, into our facility from twenty-mile radius. They have to pay a host fee if they, if they go outside of Bennington, and they haven't been doing that. But, you know, that was established twenty years ago. We looked at that and said, "Well, we're designing a facility that's big enough to handle it. Let's see if we can accommodate others." I, I think this is, this is a necessary next step for, for the folks in the county that are now dealing with solid waste issues. This law is much more detailed, much more specific than the prior law. And frankly, I'd love to have somebody else wringing their hands over it and telling me what we need to do than having me try to interpret it and get those interpretations and get them to you and try to make those decisions, so.
So you're asking for us to give you permission to go to BCRC and develop a plan to present to us for approval?
I would, yes. The SWIP would come back to every town that's involved in it for approval. We'd all have to approve it. But it would, it would take all of the information that, from all of the transfer stations in the county, put into one document. We would then all be acting on the same basis. We'd all have the same information. We'd all be looking for ways to save and to operate cooperatively that we don't do now. We don't communicate with other towns other than when we need to.
Okay.
So do you want consensus or do you need a vote?
Either consensus or vote. I just need positive response.
Stuart, there's, anybody have any questions? Tom?
This looks to me like, it's sort of like the first step, to try to develop and formulate a plan, to develop a plan for later on and see if the, these communities can work together, share the information, and then go from there. I guess the really only question I have is, what is our commitment, other than the agreement?
Other than the approximately eighty-seven hundred dollars, depending on the cost, to develop the SWIP, that's our commitment. I'll be sharing our information with the Bennington County Regional Commission and their engineer. Casella has already agreed to cooperate with us and provide their information from the operation of the transfer station recycling facilities, which they're providing to the state anyway on a quarterly basis, so that's not necessarily a big deal. But we're basically committing my time and perhaps some of Michelle's time to, to working with these folks to make sure that we get all of the information together that we need.
Okay. Greg, any questions?
No, I think considering the direction solid waste issues have been going in, anything we can explore to look down the road is well worth our while.
John?
Nope.
Justin?
No.
Johnny?
Nope.
Sure. So consensus, okay?
Consensus is good.
Do you have consensus of the board? Okay. Thank you very much. Is this something we'll see sometime this calendar year, as far as the SWIP?
Well, what we'll do is we'll authorize the planner for the Bennington County Regional Commission, and I can't think of his name, Dan.
Michael Batch.
Michael Batch. We'll start gathering the information for us, putting it into a packet that will then be basically turned over to an engineering firm to develop a plan that confirms with state law and coincides to the extent we can with that draft that's being developed by the state.
Okay, good. We'll be back before you. Next item, wetlands, journey parcel, Morgan Street. Danny? Everybody on a map, probably?
You folks will recall, I think I've, the map is put in your packet again, that a property owner that adjoins the Morgan Street Wetlands had offered to the town at a significantly reduced cost, about four and a half acres of land that they would hope would become part of the Morgan Street Wetlands if and when it becomes a recreation facility for the town. We have, as I mentioned to the board previously, the Friends of the Wetlands have raised all the funds necessary to purchase this property. Again, it is being offered at a significant discount. And I know you preliminarily approved, but I'm asking for a formal vote tonight because Stu tells me that's required, to accept this land at no cost to the town and with no restrictions. So if, for whatever reason, the town felt they didn't need this land in the future, there will be no permanent easements on it unless until the town decides to do that.
Will this go into some sort of easement perpetuity or what?
It may. It is not at this time. It would just be held by the town if and when the Morgan Street Wetlands project becomes a reality. It is likely that we would ask if the, if the town would like to include that four and a half acres in an overall easement for that, for that project. But it is not at this time.
There's no conditions to the land right now. All we have to do is say we agree to accept.
We agree, and then we'll, I'll gather the funds from the folks that have pledged the money, and I know Tim Corcoran's already drafted up the deed, and we'll record it.
Okay, we'll start the side. John, any questions on it?
Nope.
Justin?
No.
Jim?
No.
Tom?
I don't think so. Just maybe a quick one. The major parcel?
Yes.
How's that going?
Well, I can give you an update. We did, we were lucky enough to receive a copy of the appraisal for the property that the property owner had done, and that's a, that's a real big first step. And I know that Donald Campbell is working with the Vermont Land Trust to, that, based on that appraisal, go to, we're going to be approaching the landowner to get an option. And if we can, if we can obtain that option, and I've spoken to, to the real estate broker about this, so it's no surprise to them, but if we can obtain that option, then we have really the green light to move forward with developing the grant application to the Vermont Housing and Conservation Board, which is the majority of the funding. So we're really right at the point where it would be, where we'd be approaching the landowner to obtain that formal option from them.
Currently, this plot of land is one parcel. Is that how the town is considering it now in private ownership?
When you say this plot, you're talking about the one that we're purchasing?
The one we're talking about right now.
It's actually two parcels, one that's a little over two acres and one that's...
How do we identify these tax parcels? Don't we have a lot number?
Yes.
Do you have that for us?
Yeah.
If we accept this, the motion, so we make sure we know exactly what we're talking about?
Tax map parcel sixty-two dash fifty dash six.
Sixty-two dash what?
Fifty dash six and sixty-two dash fifty dash seven. They're two point nine, two point nine seven acres and one point four zero acres respectively.
Okay.
I guess the only reason...
I'm good.
Sure?
I'm good.
Okay, now, in your time, motion?
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
To accept tax parcels sixty-two dash five zero dash six and dash seven, purchase, as the purchase, as described in the proposal.
And without the conditions, right?
Yeah, it's without conditions.
There are no conditions on the, on the sale.
Yes, let's say it again.
Do you need anything else in there?
No.
Repeat the motion, Dan. I think you got it down.
I think Greg moved the town accept the parcels sixty-two dash fifty dash six and sixty-two dash fifty dash seven, without any conditions on the, on the resale of the property if the town were so to choose.
Do you understand the motion? Any discussion? Do I have a second?
One second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you, folks.
That's unanimous. Okay, thank you, Dan. I thank the property owner and thank the Friends of the, also. I gotta, I just feel this whole section we've done the last few weeks is going to make a big boom in the, in the Bennington area, especially for those who enjoy the recreation, outdoor recreation. It's a great, great piece of property. Okay. Downtown Wi-Fi. Mr. Harrington?
Sir?
If Mr. Corcoran wants to know why we don't have Wi-Fi right here as we speak right now, so we need our iPads.
I will answer as many questions as I can to the best of my ability.
Mike, you guys both get us up here.
In regards to the, to this specifically, back in March, we applied for, the town applied for a Vermont Council on Rural Development grant where they actually take on the particular project and the cost of the project, and so they coordinate the project. We were awarded that just, it was right after our last meeting, so just about three weeks ago. And you'll see in your memo a breakdown. The reason, and I felt it was appropriate to bring to you, is that there is an associated cost. So while the grant covers some installation and some equipment, there's still a cost that the town would incur, which is the contracting of having a dedicated internet line and the service to that line, so there'd be a monthly cost on that.
About what? Do you know what the cost is?
I don't know what that would be, and it would, the reason I had a hard time identifying that is because of our recent efforts to switch to fiber. I have no idea what that would cost at this point. The other cost you see, you don't see in year one to four, but you see after year five, is that each one of these wireless points that would be added can be accessed from the internet from an administrator. So there is a licensing agreement that goes along with those. It's a hundred and fifty dollars per unit per year. The grant actually covers the first five years on the con, on the contract. So what you see there after year five is the cost of the service agreement, which allows us internet access to monitor the devices as well as tech support.
Okay, how much coverage will this give in the downtown area?
They reach about, well, so the grant was anywhere from two to six access points. The way it works is that Vermont Council on Rural Development contracts with an engineering company. They come into a site visit, and they determine based on the area what they think they can afford in the grant and based on reach, because it's all about line of sight. So minimal line of sight, somewhere around two to three hundred, maximum line of sight, somewhere around four hundred feet. So they're saying for us, at this point where the grant is, we'd be probably eligible for about four repeaters or access points. So if you imagine, and again, I'm just, just guessing because they haven't done the site survey yet, if the injection point or the place where it started was at the police station with a dedicated line, the next access point would be at the four corners, and then you could have one heading on West Main Street and one heading on, on East Main Street. To give you an idea, I think about three hundred feet from the four corners is just shy of School Street. So would, it doesn't reach very far. I have also asked them whether the ability to expand the zone exists, and it does, but the ability to expand it would, the cost would rest with the municipality. And it's about fourteen hundred dollars per access point if you want to expand it. But that does include the, the five-year service agreement. So, you know, if we said we really think it's critical that we get Wi-Fi up to the library, we could talk with their survey engineer to see how many access points we'd have to have, and we could take on the cost if we felt it appropriate.
Did the library just get Wi-Fi?
Inside, yeah. This would be external Wi-Fi. It's a, and I have the specs, but it's a, it's a white box, two separate antennas to it attaches to either the outside of a building or to a lamp post, depending on ability. And it uses very minimal electricity. But that would be the other issue that you see in here. While it says negligible, if we were attached to a building, we would have to have permission to access a power source from that building. There may be an opportunity to attach it to some of our light posts, as we do for wreaths and so on during Christmas time.
Mike, how does, how does this differ from long trail wireless, which exists in the downtown?
So long trail wireless was set up by an independent individual, and what he did was create handshake agreements with different business owners where they would set up a Wi-Fi access point within their establishment. The issue is that nobody, he somewhat monitors it, but it's really up to the business owner to pay for the cost. And usually what they do is they just segment their already existing internet, so they're not necessarily buying a dedicated line. And they're usually using residential equipment. So for instance, if you go into South Street Cafe, there's long trail wireless inside. It doesn't really reach beyond the cafe doors because they're using residential equipment. And what happens is the more you use, or the more people hook into that, every time that happens, you cut the bandwidth in half. So if you're at fifty-four megabytes per second and somebody plugs in, you immediately cut that in half, and the next person that goes online, you cut that in half again, and so on and so on. So it really, the difference is the idea of taking it from what really is, again, a very mixed mash and low-end Wi-Fi internet signal that really is available only within establishments, and if one leaves, you're left with a gap in the system, to a fully networked, commercial system.
Who's this being designed for? Like, who's the, who's the intended user? Do you have anything like that in mind?
Well, I know that through the grant, the intended user is really for commercial visitors, tourism, recreation. So it, because it's outside businesses, it can be used for people within a business, but it's really designed for the person on Main Street, walking Main Street, wanting to connect with some of the stores and what the stores offer.
I guess my thought is, is there any chance of like, too many commercial users or things of that nature trying to connect onto this and then really logging down the system, so it's...
There is that, I think there's that potential. Certainly, most of the stores that exist have their internet, but there's nothing to say they wouldn't cancel that and try to hook into this. I think there's less of a concern with that if our bandwidth, if we're using that fiber, and if that's an opportunity for us to tap into. Talking with the director for the Creative Economies Department at the state, you know, what he's seeing more and more of, because I said, "Okay, we're getting this fiber in, in our community. How are communities using this to leverage business and commercial growth?" And so for him, it's really about tapping into those businesses that do most of their work online, whether it's online servers, online databases, cloud storage, and things like that. And so I think potentially this has the opportunity to, to boost some of that as well.
And there's no way to really know how many people could be logged onto it at once because it's all...
There's, there's a way to monitor it, but there's not really a way to control it.
But there's no way to also to kind of get an estimate of how many people could use it at once because it's all variable based upon what they're doing, correct? You know, with the, you know, I'm certainly not...
I mean, I can tell you that...
Curious to how many, you know, individuals, you know? If I'm sitting here reading your email and you're watching a YouTube video and somebody else tries to log on, are they going to be able to get onto it too, or is that, is that almost the, you know, the bandwidth?
I think you'll have less of an issue with, with this product, the commercial product, than you would, because I have sat in the cafe before and somebody logs in and it kicks you off.
Right.
You know, so with this, if we have the dedicated line that isn't being used for anything else, and they have established it in some other communities where it's, it's running okay. I think the idea is for us to really tailor it towards those people who are shopping in our downtown, visiting our downtown, tourists who are coming through our downtown. And then there might be opportunities to backfill other areas, but really promoting it as that type of thing upfront till we have a better idea of, of what our, what our options and opportunities are.
I think you're right there. You know, with the smartphones and the iPads and all this stuff now, I mean, it's everybody in your community. I would think if I was a business owner in downtown, I'd still maintain my internet because I'd be afraid if somebody on the outside would screw it up or this thing would be down. I could control the internet. But I want to ask, well, with John Shanahan thing, but I see, did you talk to these folks in Route 7 who you say might be willing to sponsor those zones that you outlined? Better Bennington, Evans News, Crazy Russians, Bennington Free Library, and VTC?
I have not talked with them specifically, asked who might possibly be, and those are people that have regularly promoted these types of things in the past, so.
Okay. So I guess my question, and I'm able to ask John Shanahan, if I look at the boundaries, it doesn't include the entire membership of the downtown district. Are you going to get any complaints if you're one of the sponsors from folks who are members that this doesn't extend up to their area?
Well...
John, why don't you go up to the mic, please? I'm sorry to do this to you, John, but you're not here.
The point is in that maybe they're not included, but I think Mike included in the report that if it's an issue where the entire district is not included, then maybe we should go back to the district to look at additional funding based on, like, the taxing district.
That's where I'm going.
To be able to cover the entire district.
That's where I'm going.
But at this point, since the federal funds are available to do this, or the, the funding is available to do it, at least they got to start it.
Okay.
And Mike did, you talked in detail, like, where he came up with Evans News and Nolan's, the ones that could really benefit from this.
Okay.
But as you know, with the Google project...
So, so you, you think right now the membership would understand, would go for what we can get right now, but probably, well, it'd be smart for us to extend it at some point in time when funds became available to do so.
Yeah, and like, the end of the district would be Venerus Bagels, who already offers it. So if it was something where the annual amount that goes into the taxing district included this, it's something that they wouldn't have to offer.
Okay.
So there'd be a savings on their end as well.
So we'd just fill in the, plug in the holes around if we need...
Which would be all the perimeters.
Okay, thanks, John.
Yep.
Is that going to get us here in a firehouse, Joe?
That's a different subject, but it is one that I'm working on.
All right.
After last...
I mean, it's really, it's not a joking matter. I mean, we, you know, we've, we've asked the town to do things for select board members now, and yet we're going to do half of it. We can't do it all.
Just to, so the board's aware, I, I've talked with our IT person, but also facilities. It wouldn't cost us any more to have it up here because we could certainly purchase a fifty-dollar router and put it in over by the box. The issue is that there currently isn't internet access to this room, so the biggest expense would be running a wire from the second floor where it currently, the internet currently exists.
And that's a one-time shot?
It's a one-time shot, and as long as they're okay with us tapping into it, that's, that's the issue.
Stuart, why don't you, can you have somebody prepare a cost for staff?
I, I, given, given what we're attempting to do with your packets and everything, I think we're just going to go ahead and do it.
All right, good. Thank you.
I don't see, I've already talked with Larry about it. He and I are going to walk over here along with Chief Doucette and take a look at where it comes in and what we're taking in.
Yeah, I mean, it's just one of the wire, and a router is incidental. I mean, it's not a big thing.
Yeah.
Okay, it'd be nice.
I do think it's important, Joe, and, you know, Michelle sits out there because she's the one that really worked very hard to try to get all of your packets out to you. And one of the problems that we have discovered in trying to do this is that our equipment is so antiquated and our software is so antiquated that we can't do what Greg does with his business. We can't do perhaps what Tom Jacobs or Sharon is able to do with their business. So I think we'll be talking to you during budget time about if we're going to accommodate the board and make the board feel at ease with this new technology, we need to at least get some of us up to where we can communicate effectively with you in the same way.
Maybe we'll require some software.
Yeah. I mean, we gotta, you say us, but there's going to be more to us, other agencies in the town, other departments in the town. I mean, it's not just the select board. Everybody's...
But our goal is to serve you folks.
Yeah, I understand that.
I'd like to point out, though, that I've been out of town since very early Thursday morning, got back last night, and I was able to look at the entire packet remotely. So otherwise, I would have been picking up my packet this morning and trying to rifle through it and get up to speed. So not a hundred percent this time, but certainly a great advantage for me, and I appreciate the effort.
Yeah.
It really was helpful to be able to be in Burlington and read the packet.
From a, from a digital perspective, too, it, it also plays a role that everybody is accessing it the same way, too. So if you're accessing it from different devices or different, if you don't, you know, we used a Dropbox link to get it to you because the packet was so large, but if you don't have a Dropbox account, that becomes cumbersome. And so part of that is, as we're talking about how to get the information to the board, we have to have the right equipment, but I think the board has to be kind of uniform in how they want to access that equipment. And what's the best way for them to do that?
Well, reading Tom's emails, I mean, I found out what a Dropbox was based on. Reading Tom's stuff.
The nice thing about this is, you know, it's part of the ninety-day agenda.
Yeah.
We're, we're really focusing on that economic development plan, and this is a real critical baseline.
And I've forwarded some stuff to Stu, but there's a lot of interesting stuff coming out through Google at the moment, too. And so I'll just make sure I keep forwarding stuff that I see, and if it's appropriate, then we'll bring it to you guys.
Okay, so bringing us back into focus.
Yeah.
The memorandum Dan has provided to us, what are you asking for, or Mike, rather, what are you asking us for, Mike?
Essentially, they're gonna, the next step is for VCRD to come and do the site survey. I just told them to pause till I had the okay from you that we were comfortable moving forward with this project, knowing that we could be looking at an additional cost over the next four years of about twelve hundred dollars per year, give or take.
Let's put this formally. You have a motion for that?
So moved.
You go. Second.
So moved and you'll second it.
Okay. Sharon's moved.
To move forward.
Tom is second. Any further discussion? All in favor? If it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, let's move on to the management report. Stuart?
I don't have any action items for you at this time. There was a brief discussion there about the, the meeting that some of you were talking about early on. It was an organizational meeting. It was the first meeting between members of the select board and school boards, focusing mainly on the chairs of those boards. I did attend, as did the superintendent of schools. Dan and Mike are the two staff people that are, been principally responsible for putting these meetings together, overseeing the plan and the priorities that you've all adopted under your ninety-day scenario. And Mike's doing the documentation of these meetings. And the initial plan really, really was to organize, get a feel from the people in the room about where this kind of a collaborative venture could take us. It was, I think we spent about an hour, hour and fifteen, twenty minutes talking, all of us having other responsibilities during the day. But I highlight for you some of the things that were brought up from the individuals at the meeting. And one of the things that's in there that we talked about a little bit is governance structure. I can tell you that we're not attempting to focus on the SVSU governance structure, but we're focusing more on the relationship between the BSD and Mount Anthony and the Bennington Select Board because that's where the Bennington students are. They're not going to take on...
You know, that was Stuart's suggestion and I'll tell you why. You gotta, everybody raised your eyebrows, thought it was a good idea and this is one I want to see us pursue. I can see some great benefits for the town of Bennington by doing this.
What you're referring to, Joe, is the potential for the BSD, which is an incorporated school district. Essentially, it's a separate municipality under state law to alter its charter or give up its charter and potentially become a town school district, which would mean their annual meeting would coincide with ours. That's one of the benefits, so that you would have the school board and the select board sitting at the same table in that evening in March, early March, to talk about the budgets and the impacts. It would also, I think, bring us all closer together from a budgeting perspective.
That's the big one.
So that we're understanding what those impacts are as we build our budgets, not at the end where either the taxpayer is shocked at what they're looking at or we're all confused about what we're looking at. So, I suspect that the BSD will discuss this at length. They're going to talk a little bit with the school governance people upstate to fully understand what the law, how the law would change what they do. And it's got to be obviously a vote of the Bennington School District to do either one, give up their charter or amend their charter to become a town school district. So, it's not likely to happen quickly, but theoretically, it could happen next March and then we would be going forward together, which I think is a tremendous opportunity. But the other issues that were discussed here are all things that can be worked on in the interim, just because we've now agreed to sit at the same table and talk with one another. And it's less about who we are and who our constituents are. We've identified Bennington as our constituents collectively and that's a good thing.
There was no finger pointing. It was everybody with open mind in that thing. All the chairs were there.
It was a good meeting.
It was a good meeting. And didn't we establish a date for the next one?
I don't think we did establish a date. We were going to try to meet...
Okay.
We were committed to meet again. We're committed to meet again. We'd meet regularly.
Take it from where we left off here. And obviously, anybody can attend. It's an open meeting. We'll do better than announce the select board if you all can attend to go, but I intend to make sure I'm there. And we, did we get that article printed, the banner that we, the...
Press release went to the banner today, right?
It went today.
It did? It wasn't today's?
Yeah, I was talking to you.
Okay. If you haven't seen that, let's make sure the select board gets a copy. It's a good write-up as far as what actually took place. Make sure, Mike, we get a copy, everybody. Okay, anything else, Stuart?
Just, you may take note of the tax sale calendar. We're scheduling tax sales for the 25th of September. There are certain statutory requirements that we must meet in order to do so and those are underway.
Okay.
Currently, about 20 properties, as I said, we didn't want to provide a list because some of those will be resolved when the lien holders step in, as we expect many of them will, to resolve the delinquency and that'll take them off the list.
All right.
And that's it, folks.
Okay. Tom, other business.
I haven't got anything else.
Great.
No, that's all.
Okay, John?
What's up?
Justin?
No.
Jim?
A question about Silver Street. Was that part of that scheduled to be redone this year? Is it on schedule for...
There are portions of sidewalk on Silver Street as you get up towards the top of the hill that are scheduled to be rebuilt. And that's going to require some retaining walls and things like that because the property's dropped to the sidewalk very steeply.
But that is scheduled for...
Yes.
And by the way, the work that has been done on School Street looks great. Really does.
Thank you.
Sharon?
Yeah, I have a couple of things, actually. Do you know if the town going to reseed Union Street where we did the, between the sidewalks and the highway and the curb?
More than likely.
Okay.
Probably, given the time of year that that was finally finished, we put down some quick seeded rye, didn't survive the winter.
A lot of it didn't grow, so I've had people ask me about it. The other thing is I appreciate the new crossing signals that we have, but I'm convinced that they need to make some kind of noise other than... People don't pay attention to them. They don't, I mean, they don't see the white signal up there and there's just, they just keep walking. I mean, they walk helter-skelter and just don't...
Well, I think you're going to find that ultimately, we would like to be able to make those crossing signals concurrent with the direction of traffic so that people are able to step off the curb slightly ahead of the signal change, be out in the crosswalk, allowing for right-hand turn movements should people decide to make them, yet be able to cross more readily. I mean, right now, you have to wait for four cycles before those go.
Right.
And I think that's what, people lose their patience. They just don't want to wait. They press the button, it doesn't happen right away, they go.
But we have the ability to readjust those or reset them somehow?
I'm told that we'll probably need a new controller and we're working with the state to see if we can do that. And that's the mechanism that allows you to alter those signals so they can run concurrently.
Okay. And the last thing I have is, and this is just to avoid phone calls to the bank and to the town. When they did the new brickwork down at the Four Corners, we've discovered that the base of the clock, the actual pole that holds the clock up, has deteriorated. So, we will be taking the clock down temporarily. It's not going to go away permanently. It will be repaired. They have to actually fabricate a new pole or, so to speak, to put on, to set the clock on. They're just afraid that the whole thing is just going to come crashing down one day and we want to avoid that if at all possible. So, the clock will come down. I'm not sure when that's going to happen, but it will be down for whatever length of time it takes to redo it and reset it. Just to avoid phone calls, it's not going away permanently.
And Sharon, can we clarify? That's People's United Bank's responsibility.
Yes, it is. People's United Bank, contrary to some, what some believe, owns the clock. It's not a town clock, so don't call me.
Anything else?
That's it.
Joe, I've got one. Stu, would you explain again, I called you about the sand and the dirt that's right on the corner of People's Bank and why it's still there?
Yes, and that's why it's still there.
Okay.
Sharon, just, what happened was the contractor was ready to close the project. He left the sand, some sand in place piled against the building, assuming that there'd be some settlement, then they'd come back in and brush all that out. We discovered that the base of the clock was in very bad shape and that was the initial exterior piece. When that was lifted up, the pole actually underneath was also deteriorated. So, the contractor's now been back. He has cleaned up his mess, I believe.
He's cleaned it up. It's not perfect, but he's cleaned it up.
It's not perfect, but he's cleaned it up and we've set aside some time for the bank to work on the clock and then we'll actually come back in and really finish it off.
So, the cones that are around the base of the clock are there because there's missing bricks and we don't want people to fall on them, but yeah, the clock will go away temporarily.
Okay, anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Also, if you remember, see Terry Morse's response to Greg's email. Have you been satisfied with that explanation?
Yeah. Personally, that was kind of what I expected and why I would like to know a little bit more about that ahead of the meeting or know that the meeting was going to be on because I know a lot of planning does go on and a lot of things happen. So, I wasn't expecting to see that we changed the schedule on the Saturday paper. I fully expected to see that in Saturday's paper and say, this is why we're doing it then. So, I guess that's just my request to, you know, if we can be in the forefront of these discussions a little bit, we can...
Well, I can tell you, we had no idea what we were going to...
Walk into.
Walk into. And a lot of times what happens, and Terry's email is very good, you meet individuals with a business person or a residential person and they think, okay, that's fine, that's going to go forward. But then they begin to talk to each other or they take the time to go back and look at their books and see when their busy season is and then that sudden panic sets in. And the folks at the North Side Diner that evening were principally very, very concerned about the timing of the project and we weren't certain we could change it at that meeting, but we did let them know in order to reduce their anxiety that we'd try to take a look at that and make a decision relatively quickly if it wasn't going to be too cumbersome for us to do so. The contractor turned out to be very cooperative. We're going forward with some of the purchases of the materials and as we nail down the various changes in the scope of the project that are going to be required, we'll let you know what those are. But we don't expect they're going to see a huge increase in the bid price, but, you know, the cost of fuel could change everything dramatically. The type of winter that we have could make it extremely different.
I was also asked by a couple of business owners on North Side Drive why there wasn't any select board members at the meeting. You know, it's just, I hate what my answer is because I didn't know about it and I read about it in the paper. So, just, you know, going forward also, if we can get some more information about this stuff when it's going to go on, I just, I like to know about things, so when I get calls about it, I'm not shooting blind and...
Well, again, it wasn't our meeting. We were contacted by the group of property owners who asked to meet with the manager and I pulled Terry and the engineer into the project because they needed to voice their concerns and it was really their meeting. I didn't know who they had invited. I didn't know who they'd invited to the meeting.
You know, what I like to try and point out to people as often as possible is that the forethought does go into these planning decisions and not arbitrary and, you know, there's a reason that our tourist season and our construction season coincide. It's called winter. You know, that's how we base things a lot of times. So, tourist fluctuation, obviously, it's great to be able to use it, but I just know there were a lot of conversations well before this meeting happened with North Side Drive business owners about the impact and whatnot, so I was surprised.
There was also conversation between us, if you recall, those of us who are on the board. That shouldn't have been a surprise to any of us. We talked about it budget time, we talked about other times and we're going to get full warn because as those projects are mentioned this year in budget, I intend to go through so everybody knows what we're talking about so nobody says, I didn't know. Was it phase three or phase four? Well, this is, we're actually doing phase five now. I'm going to do phase four next simply because of the cost. But I think, you know, you folks were surprised because the meeting happened. The banner was notified. We didn't notify the banner, nor did we notify the Herald for that matter. That was all done by the people organizing the meeting for whatever impact they thought they needed. I think had we not given them an answer that they could accept, they would have been at your next meeting or you would have been invited to the next meeting to attempt to overrule us.
Well, I appreciate you accommodating the customers and the businesses to keep that straight.
Okay, so I have, we do have a need to go in executive session for contracts, real estate and personnel.
Some move to go in executive session for real estate.
Okay, grab a second. Any discussion?
I got a discussion on that. The creation of a, what we're looking at is the creation of a new position. Why are we, I think we should be handling that question in public session and then if we choose to go forward with creating a position, handling the filling of the...
I think it's just the opposite. It's personnel matter because we're not talking plane, we're not talking, we're not just talking position.
Sure.
Well, there is the, the personnel is involved. I mean, I wrestled with that, Justin, frankly, but because there is a specific personnel, person that is involved in the decision...
What I would suggest is, and this is definitely, this is going to be my suggestion, is that we discuss the position, the relevance and whether or not the position is needed aside from the personnel piece of it. And if the board decides to go ahead with recreating this position again, then we could have the discussion in executive session about who would fill it. But I do think they're two very separate instances.
Okay, so everybody saw the memo, it's in our packets, confidential. How does the rest of the board feel? Should we go in executive session, discuss it, then come out and say whether we're willing to go in and create that position or the way that Justin's suggesting?
May I suggest that because the memorandum deals with both, the, what matters, Justin believes are public and the personnel involved, I would ask that the board consider this, the personnel portion of this tonight. And if you want, we could put it on the next agenda as an agenda item.
Or the creation of the position.
Or the reinstatement of the position.
You understand that?
I'm all right with that.
Since it's not on the agenda to bring it up as a public...
That's correct.
...point would be...
I don't want to go into executive session, come out and have the media...
No.
Trying to figure out if we're going to take any action tonight. I'd rather put it on the agenda.
Hold off on the whole discussion, is that what you're saying?
No.
No, I, let's discuss the personnel involved so you're comfortable there and then if, you know, we'll discuss the position, whether or not it has...
Part of my, part of my issue with the position is not the personnel involved, but the way in which we're going to go about selecting that personnel. So, I just, I think the position needs to be either created or not created before we fill it. It just, I don't think it really makes sense to decide who's going to fill a position that we haven't decided actually exists yet.
Okay, we've had a recommendation from the town manager how to do this. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?